Involved with the environment of Royal Park, and which are Royal Park Protection Group, and Protectives Public Land, and Parkville Association. Hello. Oh, well, I said I was pleased Royal Park. So for some of our conveners, all those associations, we've got Michael Patink, Fiona Bell, and Rob Moore. And now, before I could introduce our guest speakers, I'd like to welcome Rohan McCurt from the City of Melbourne Council. And he's been in charge of the, you've got an official title here, haven't you? You've been the leader of the Environment and Heritage for the Parks and Council. And that's been for a long time.
This term, so at the overall in the environment. So this term up in the environment, where can you come in?
Yes, thank you for your work. We appreciate it as a group. I think it's appropriate, too, that I do the acknowledgement of country for us. So we acknowledge the Wanjiri, Woi Warram, that's the traditional custodians of the land that is Royal Park, and pay our respects to their elders, past present, and emerging. All right, so as most of you have probably been participating and are aware of the master plan, the Royal Park Master Plan, that's been reviewed. And there've been some key players in that. And most of you have probably met Alicia, who's been, well, you've been directing it, haven't you? Yeah. So there are guest speakers for today. Yep. And how long will you speak for?
Um, the presentation's 20 to 25 minutes. It's predominantly going over the findings of the community engagement that happened November to December last year. So there's some really key findings that we want to sort of chat through with you and get some feedback on. But we're open to leaving it, so questions at the end, if there's anything of note.
That'd be great. You're going to talk with us. All right, so I think we're probably about ready to, I'll just also introduce Fiona. Fiona Thimnaisen, she's Manager of Urban Space planning and Green Infrastructure for City Green and Agribusiness in Melbourne. And Alicia has been that senior Open Space planning. All right, so we've sorted out the format. Alicia's going to speak first for about 20 to 25 minutes. Then we'll open up for questions and discussion. And then after that, there's refreshments, as you can see. And we've also got to get on those.
Thanks, Primrose. Um, as you said, my name's Alicia. There's a lot of very familiar faces in the room. So I've been working on the Royal Park Master Plan almost two years. It'll be two years in June. Um, and so we are quite substantive way through the project, where we did five weeks of community consultation from 6th of November to 10th of December last year. Um, and we got an overwhelmingly high response. And so it's taken up a little while to go through all of those responses. And so you are getting a preview of the information that'll go on to Participate Melbourne. So if you haven't already signed up to follow the Participate Melbourne page, that's where we share all of our dates for community engagement and activities that are happening for the project. Um, and we'll be updating that shortly with the full report of the community engagement findings. Um, I'd also like to acknowledge that Royal Park is fully within the Marangri registered area of Royal Park area and pay my respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. Um, so. Purpose of today's presentation. There we go. Purpose of today's presentation is to review the results of the community engagement. Some of the summary findings from consultation and review some of our next steps. So like that engagement ran from 6th of November to 10th of December. Engagement activities obtained over 1,900 comments. So that's why it's taken us three months to come back to you.
Can I ask a question? Is that actually a topic you know? Will this be available?
Yes, we can share this with you.
Thank you.
Um, and that came from 1,432 surveys, 375 participants across five pop-ups in the park. So you would have seen our little trailer in the park. And we talked to lots of different people at different times during that period. 108 online mapping comments by 42 contributors. So that meant most people were doing two to three comments each. And 10 detailed written submissions from pretty much all of the groups that are present here. So who did we hear from? So mostly residents living in the city of Melbourne. 70.6% of residents compared to 29.4 non-resident visitors, workers, businesses, owners, and students. Mostly people who use or visit Royal Park regularly. So 71% who use or visit the park daily, a few times a week, or once a week. Mostly people, over 70%, who travel to the park using active transport mode. So this was quite an interesting finding. Um, different to what we could probably anticipate. It was 45.3% of people walked to the park, 17.7% ride, and 7.2% used public transport. Um, people who use the park in a wide variety of ways to support a healthy lifestyle, including predominantly walking, jog or run at 35%, play formal sport at 34.1%, ride their bike at 33.4%, and enjoy nature at 30.3%. Uh, that photo is probably one of my favourite community engagement activities. It was with the Wimble Street kindergarten kids. Um, and we got to chat to them during their bushkinder, which happens every second Thursday in the park. Um, they got to tell us about their little adventures that they have in the park and the things that they want to see in the future. So it was a very interesting activity. So the question for the group is, does that data match with your perceptions on the key uses of Royal Park? And I'm happy to take statements or questions.
I'm pleased.
You're pleased with the number?
Yes.
So compared to Domain Parklands, which we did, or which council did in 2019, got 400 comments and submissions, we're pretty much four times that.
I think, I would thought that the people enjoyed the nature more than you lot.
Yeah, 30%.
At 30%? It's probably the theme sport.
Confident number of our naturalists posting though, 10, we only love.
It'll depend on the number of people who made a submission. So where, they also could choose two of those activities. So they might have chosen nature and sport. Um, so the full report will have a bigger breakdown of those topics. Um, so, but yes, if you think that's a little low, that is something that we target next one round around, do we go to some of those touching groups or do we go to other groups that might change the numbers slightly?
It's just, they go really, really low.
We did have 75 signs in the park. So on pretty much every piece of infrastructure, we put a sticker of a sign. So to gauge as much of those kind of casual users of the park as possible. Um, and it was quite easy to use. So we got really good feedback. And also thanks to Kay, who was her idea to put stickers on the sign, um, to make sure we got as much exposure as possible.
Now, about Instagram.
Um, so just a reminder, there were eight themes in the discussion paper. So we had celebrating Aboriginal culture and knowledge, caring for nature, continuing the legacy of the previous master plans, landscape characters, recreation and community wellbeing, visitor experience, movement through within the park, and parking roads and transport. So this next section will be kind of the higher level findings that were generally consistent across all of the engagement activities for those themes in particular. So there was strong support for Royal Park to be a place to connect to country and acknowledge and celebrate Aboriginal culture. Discussions with Marangri are ongoing as we develop the plan. Um, so they've finished their review of the Conservation Management Plan, which has a lot of conservation values that they want us to bring through to the master plan. Um, and that is probably a big substantive change to how we structure master plans, where we're taking a lot of those cultural values and bringing it through the master plan to make sure their ideas and thoughts are well reflected. Um, theme two, participants want the path to be protected while natural space focused on trees, vegetation, and native habitat. That was an overwhelmingly consistent response across multiple, through the pop-ups, through the letters, through the survey submissions. So it's definitely one of the key things that we know we need to consider as we develop the master plan. And we know that it has to be priority as we develop the ideas in the master plan. Um, the theme four was the most valued elements of Royal Park are the natural landscapes, including trees, plants, and animals. These elements were selected over 1,700 times across multiple engagement events. Other elements included walking shared paths, which was actually really high. Um, recreation and sporting facilities, and larger spaces used to the city. Um, theme five is participants want Royal Park to be a place for everyone, where the community can come together to connect, learn, socialise, be active, and enjoy nature. So that was predominantly coming out of that recreation and community wellbeing theme, where they're wanting probably to see more accessible elements of the park. So Kay and I were talking about pavilions earlier, where they should be shared not just with sport, but with community groups. Um, and that came across pretty highly as well, around if we have these really amazing facilities in the park, it shouldn't just be sport, etc. Um, also, we heard quite highly from culturally and linguistically diverse groups, particularly women that live in the Housing Commission in North Melbourne and Flemington, that they are wanting to undertake small community group activities in the park in a space that feels really safe for them. So that's probably a different consideration that we hadn't had prior to the community engagement activities. Um, theme six was safety issues prevent some people from visiting certain areas in the park, with over 350 comments relating to safety improvements. Many of these issues resonate with the safety audit that was done. Some of you have participated in that project. Um, the full safety audit report is now online on Participate Melbourne as well. So you can see the full findings of that document. Um, but safety issues is also around visiting parts of the park for different reasons. So it might be that you don't play sport, and therefore you potentially don't want to get hit by cricket ball, you don't want to get hit by football. Um, so you're not going to head to the sports field. And so it means those areas aren't working as hard as they could be for people that are watching or walking or other activities. They could co-use those spaces pretty easily. Um, other safety issues were around access to the tram stops, the train station, particularly after hours.
Alicia, have a question on that.
Yes.
Do you any work at all on any crime statistics in the park? Because the only one I know of was that horrendous murder, but that was not related to a munter. That was related to a domestic dispute. Do you do have any stats at all on any crimes committed in Royal Park?
So we had the community policing officer participate in the safety audits of all 10 of the hotspots in the park. And so they also get reports of near misses, of assaults, of, um, the robberies of backpacks and robberies within cars, which is really high around Melbourne Zoo. Um, so he did give out some of those statistics of where there's particular spots. And a lot of the hotspots matched with those crime statistics. Some we can't share, just because they're active court cases. But generally speaking, they gave us the direction to go, these are the hotspots, it'd be good to get an understanding, doing an audit of what might be a potential solution to address those. So he was a really helpful resource. He's based at North Melbourne Police Precinct.
He's very successful.
Yeah. Um, and he does a lot of work with the City of Melbourne in our parks. So, um, we're really happy to have him. I was particularly happy to have him on night time audits. I did about 20 of them. Um, so yes, we've kind of matched those hotspots with particular, um, issues that we'll need to address in the master plan.
Can you share those with us? Where are the hotspots?
So the 10 hotspots, if you look up Royal Park Community Safety Audit, the 10 hotspots are the ones that we did audit across, and they're all online.
We shouldn't have to look online to find anything.
I can list them off the top of my head if you want them. Um, so Royal Park Station is one of them. Um, Melbourne Zoo is one of them. The intersection of the Upfield Trail and Park Street is one of them. The intersection of the Capital City Trail and the Upfield Trail just behind the tennis club is one of them. Um, up near Trimore and Temple on both sides, the storage wetland and the, um, well, the storage pond and the wetland itself. Um, so I think that's six. Now, it's just that I remember. Yeah, they're pretty isolated. So, um, but they also get a lot of traffic. So they'll get a high foot traffic. Um, the train stops were the other ones that we looked at as well. And also down at North Park Tennis Club, there we go, the ten. Um, so the North Park Tennis Club was around where the, um, that murder happened. Um, but also there was, there's issues there with people wanting to cross Macarthur Road. There's also been a fatality at that intersection by a pedestrian. Um, so needing to have a signalised crossing at Bren's Drive to get people from southern part of the park to the northern part of the park.
What percentage of these statistics would be classified as violent? And what percentage would be thefts and that sort of?
Um, I'd have to go back to the police.
It'd be interesting to find out. Because it would be valuable to know what kind of acts would be.
Yeah. Um, I mean, the other thing with calling them hotspots, I guess, is to capture the range of incidents or issues that have occurred there. Um, we also don't want to scare people off from using the park. So there's a delicate balance of sharing too much information and sharing enough that we can kind of make improvements where need, improvements need to be made. But we can look into getting some of that.
Because it's related to lighting, okay? That's why I'm bringing it up. And if we go down that road, we need to see what, how that would relate. Any issues having to do with lighting?
Yeah. Take that on notice.
I'll mention something I know about now, the story.
Yep.
I mean, I thought it was calculated and I spoke to, I didn't, it actually, people choose in groups, partners.
Yeah, it's a bit of an unofficial peak, unfortunately. Um, so yes, it's already well monitored by both local police and our ranger team. Um, it sort of comes and goes to different points in the year.
But the main thing about lighting is, you usually come in tents, you don't go down King Street until probably morning on the road. So why don't you go to something that's lighting for the park?
Well, tram and train services run till 12:30 into Royal Park. So it's predominantly about getting people from the station and the tram stop safely to the residential areas outside. That's actually really difficult at the moment, especially at that time of night.
There are roads.
There are roads, but you can't walk on through. And a lot of people wouldn't want to. And the roads don't have a bus. Poplar Road in particular does to a certain point, but then the footpaths go inside the park further out, which aren't there. Yep.
Um, theme two has associated with it some element of safety. You can have a wild, natural, unprotected, whatever, whatever, whatever. Um, what do you view as on how you balance the sort of physical safety aspects, not necessarily theft or mugging or whatever?
Yes.
Physical safety aspects with having a wild place?
It's probably been.
You don't want to unwild it to make it safe.
Correct.
Actually destroy the theme two.
Yeah, so that's probably been the thing that we have had the most difficulty balancing, those two things. Um, but we are looking at, I guess, the balance approach is to keep as much of the park as wild as possible, but taking into account, we are in an urban park with public transport destinations in the middle of it and residential that people are trying to get to on either side. If we can limit being light lighting to those strategic parts to get them in and out and keep the rest of the park as safe and as wild as possible for all the animals who live here, um, then that's kind of how we need to do the balancing act between people's safety and also animal and habitat.
So that balance is something you have to be aware of.
Yeah, it's the balance that we're trying to address through hearing a lot of these kind of comments, but also your advocacy around making sure that it's as, we're laying for a specific purpose and we're being as consistent as we can with the dark sky policies around lighting only where lighting has to be, not everything.
With that one, Alicia, as you say, I'm sure South Park would rather save it and Royal Park would. Very few people would ever catch the train to Royal Park anyway. So the residents this side of the park wouldn't be walking back.
But it's university students who are walking back.
For why?
So they have university colleges all up.
No, no, I understand that, but why wouldn't they catch the trains? Or the bus? They all go up Royal Parade and Sydney.
They've got choices.
They've got choices about which.
That's right.
They need to make their own choices about what public transport. We can't tell them to take.
Oh, no, but then if they don't take the train, then the buses up Royal Parade and also the park is safer shortly in the next year. Then clearly, it's their choice if they want to walk through the park, not to have a nick pass.
But it's also our duty of care to make sure that that choice is as safe as possible.
Can they put a little chip on a Mikey card saying you can't go that way?
Uh, because that impedes people's freedom.
Excuse me, lighting that route would be an unlawful thing to do at 2:00 in the morning. Lighting it shouldn't have inherited being safe. And not leading immediately to not safe.
So it's a balancing act of, at the moment, there's nothing. And so they're walking on the road, which is incredibly unsafe. And there are cars and there are people using that car all the time, in particular Poplar Road on Teweda. So we need to make choices around where is the best option. It may not be the perfect option. Yeah.
Especially students who've not just arrived in, haven't gone, they've been here a little while. And everyone back from the colleges tells them, no, 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 jump off to the park at night. Don't be mad, take the can.
But they don't.
If you like the park, then.
But it's allowed to us to make them make that choice.
But it makes a full viable safe option, and it's not safe.
But the more people that are using that car will make it safer.
But will it?
No, no, no.
No.
Because all of them are that sick.
But it's only on one side of the park. The biggest concern we've heard is from Parkville Gardens residents and from students. Parkville Gardens is got 2,500 residents on that side. Their nearest train station is Royal Park. We need to enable them to feel as safe as possible using public transport. The other concern a lot of these groups have is around car parking. If we can't make the public transport as safe as possible, then they're going to choose to use a car, which has a bigger impact on the park.
Where would that impact?
They park around the zoo.
You mean when they go home?
Well, a lot, so there's a lot of people who are commuting. So they'll drive their car to the zoo, catch the train, and go back out. But they, the cheapest parking in all of the city park.
Ah, well, I guess there's a solution. No, hang on. We need to resurrect the fact that the parking in Royal Park is for park users only, and that's never been changed. And commuter car parking does not come into that. You can't tell me that just because you walk 100 metres from your car, commuter car parking in the zoo, to the station is park. And I really feel that was put in place way back in the 80s.
Correct, but the issue is the price of the parking hasn't kept up with the rest of the city. But, so they're choosing that over something else. So we need to make a different choice in the master plan that would discourage that non-parking user from parking in the station. So it's interlinked, so.
Couldn't the parking be made a real surprise?
It could be, but it requires a substantive change in state government. So the price has been set at $2 since 1985.
That's state or city?
That's state, state. But we can promise it.
Well, if you're going down by, you're going to explore the option?
Yes.
And that, you have, what do you call it, spotlighting? It comes on when somebody walks by or somebody rides. Not that I'm endorsing it, but I'm going to look at lighting. Are you going to explore that option as just distinct from just keeping everything lit?
Correct, yes. So, um, I don't know if you've seen the lighting recently that we put in across the bridge on the Capital City Trail on the north of the train line?
Okay, I haven't seen it, but I will.
No, no, it's on the behind origin. So it's about a 20-metre stretch that was a really dangerous section for cyclists. That now has solar lighting, it's downward facing, it meets dark sky compliant requirements. We would be looking at similar solutions across the whole park. It only comes on at dusk, it goes off in the morning. So it's only there where it's needed. Um, so there's a lot more lighting solutions now than there was in 1997 that allow us to do the balance of safety and the environment.
In the area that is staying from Elliot Avenue close to here, you know, their whole block, there's really no reason why anyone should walk through the park at night because we've got good path, well lit, we've got train stops.
But they stop in the, so the lighting at the moment doesn't complete that existing park corridor. So it's stopping, it's stopping at the hospital and doesn't continue over. So the biggest gap we've seen is that if we were wanting to keep those existing paths, you're exactly right, we want to keep them where.
This is the.
I want them to go round, I don't want them to go through. Right, I want people.
But the tram's already going through, and it's lit.
Yeah, but, hang on, they took out tram stop 23. And the reason why the lights between the back of the hospital and tram stop 23, which is where the park crosses, were put in to facilitate hospital workers going to the tram. Well, they, I think arbitrarily decided they didn't want to do that. So those lights are actually off completely. And I think we need to go back and revisit, because nobody's walking through a long existing tram stop anymore.
No, but they are continuing up the path to the station.
But they should walk around.
But they can't. Like, you are trying to make people make a choice that's not reasonable.
Well, it is.
And how quickly, can I just clarify?
Yes.
From the hospital are walking along the tram.
There's a, there's a shared park along the train line.
Get to cheap parking at the station.
Or the train station. Or the train station, it's the, but that's the nearest train stop.
If it's been white tank, it's not reasonable.
What's that, sorry?
If it's, if it's white tank, it's not reasonable.
Yes.
In other words, I think the previous death was during the Second War. When the Americans were camping here, and one of the best soldiers who was down with the Red Army.
Well, that's a pretty good record, why didn't you ask 100?
I must say, I, I think I take umbrage at your remarks about whether it's reasonable or not. I mean, people know possible dangers so much if they don't go through it. And we can't let the whole public place. You're hearing.
The intent is not to flood the park.
Two legends told us about the flood.
No, can we also just, nobody's suggesting that we do that. We're talking about strategic paths.
It's beginning to sound very much like that. And I've just put it to a vote, we don't want.
Okay. Not interested.
This is not a forum, this is not a forum. We have no agenda, we have no meeting in place, this is not a forum to take.
It's a meeting.
So can I just say at one point, because Parkville Station is going to be opening next year, that really that should be built into our considerations for people.
It might turn to people's behaviour, a large portion of people's behaviour.
Yeah, we need to be aware that that's happening and that presents a whole different safety transport scenario.
But it may only serve as one side of the park. So the biggest other change is Parkville Gardens, which didn't exist until 2006. There's 2,500 people that live there. A lot of them do not own a car. Their primary mode of public transport is the train and walking. Um, and the bus. But the bus isn't frequent enough and the train is. So they, it's also the second highest in the city user of e-scooters. So they're doing first mile and last mile on e-scooters to get to the station. And we, that's another choice that we may have to look at for sort of. Yeah.
Do you mind if we, if the station frames with easy range for the bus?
It is, but it's not acceptable for people with mobility issues or aged. It does have a ramp, but there is also a Chinese older person's home that lives on that side. There's a, quite a lot of over 50s accommodation on that side. They prefer to walk the flatter journey along Poplar Road to get to the station. And a lot of them will catch the bus to Royal Park Station.
So I mean, I guess the simple solution, do you like Poplar Road?
Yeah. Which is a key east-west corner.
Although it's not this side of Elliot Avenue, the others are here.
Yeah.
I think we're probably getting the idea that this is probably the contentious. I think we're probably getting the idea that this is probably the most contentious of the issue.
It's just some dog at a start. Yeah, so the, the three things that I guess there is a level of contention, lighting being one of them, um, car parking is another, and also the scale of change required to meet community needs in terms of population growth. So those three things are probably the ones where we're not seeing consensus in the community engagement feedback, and they're the things that we're needing to sort of work through and tease over the next sort of six months before the draft comes out for community consultation, so.
So can I clarify, so it comes out in six months, so it comes out September, can't you? So will the existing council or newly elected council look at this?
Uh, the existing council will look at it.
So just before the elections?
Yeah. Also September. The last, potentially last.
Will you be making recommendations, or will you be doing that, you're just?
No, so the master plan looks at future actions to address particular concerns in the park. Um, that can be cover a range of things, so it can cover access, it can cover car parking, it can cover recreation, it can cover sport. So we're looking at the community engagement finding, the background studies, um, and also our in-house expertise to kind of tease out where are our priorities for the next 20 years for this next master plan.
And then, does that come out in draft form first for us to look at, or is that the last?
Yes. So you get two lots of in, community engagement.
So this year, can I ask to help us move to the next step? Is, was transport study many years ago, which is probably, I don't think.
Twenty eighteen.
Has another one been done, and can that be made available so that people can see what their recommendations are and how to fit in the master plan? The cultural heritage study, which is important, and there was another one.
We've done ecology, cultural heritage, landscape, recreation, parking, um, as a background study to inform the master plan.
Surely all of those should be made available, um, for people to then inform their comments coming back, because they need to know how to inform your preparation for the draft master plan.
Yeah, so a good example is the community engagement that we did on the safety audit, that full report and recommendations are now online, so you can review that document. I take on board that not everyone reviews things online, that would be to thank you guys a hard copy to have as a reference here for those who may need it.
But what about the other, the other reports, transport, ecology?
We're still working through them, so some of them require some additional work, um, they're high level documents, they're generally for internal comment, but we'll take that on notice and we'll let you know what we're able to share.
Normally with the strategic plan, those supporting documents are made available.
Could I, um, just comment on the, ask you a question?
Sure.
On the car parking.
Yeah.
Around the hockey centre.
Yeah.
I went down to a hockey centre yesterday about a few days, to have a look at having cars were parked down there. I've noticed, I counted about 160 cars parked, and most of which seem to be connected to the hockey centre, bit more than half, I don't know whether most people do, I didn't get the impression that there were people playing games there, I shouldn't know if people were playing there. That, there on the, in the car park, the lined car park area, outside the lined car park area, it's quite substantial amount of artificial parking, which is gravel, not marked, and quite a lot of cars there, I formed the impression that they would like park and ride people to park their car there for the day and talk to the city all over.
So the State Sports Centre is on its own trust, and the State Sports Centre is on its own piece of land within Royal Park, they're managed by the State Sports Centre Trust. So if you thought that $2 car parking at the zoo was cheap, theirs is even cheaper at $0. So the Parking Management Plan made a recommendation for a centrally managed parking system, so that the parking for the zoo and the parking for the State Sports Centre are on the same system. Um, and that would look at things like how it operates, the prices, or everything. And so what that means then, instead of this, so I take on board that people are wanting people to go around the park, the same goes for car parking, we have sufficient capacity in a lot of areas of our park that aren't being used very well for car parking in particular. So if we want people to park on the outside, the parking inside the park has to be more expensive than the parking on the outside. At the moment, because the parking on the inside is cheap or zero, we're getting the opposite effect of walking along, so there's more people parking where we don't want them and less parking where we do. So the Parking Management Plan talked about creating a better system that allows us to encourage people from price point, that they park on the outside of the park, and we may have to facilitate that in some way, and then the centrally managed ones are priced accordingly because they're taking up really valuable park space.
Sure, well, I don't know where the boundaries of the hockey centre are.
You can see where the little green galvanized fence is, so it's like about this height, and that sits on the.
So that's where the.
That's their boundary. That's their title.
So this gravel area would be outside their.
No, it's inside their title.
So it goes up to the train track area.
Yeah.
The other option, I mean, obviously increasing, um, the parking fees is valuable, you could also, um, downsize the.
Size and.
And that's very effective to get rid of the commuters.
Yeah. So the Parking Management Plan talks about a range of interventions to allow the parking in the park to be valued for what it is, that it's taking up really valuable space, but also to encourage the system, we do want, where we're wanting them outside of the park and not parking inside.
Is that kind of last now, or is it still evolving?
Um, the Parking Management Plan is one of them.
Is that available online, or?
Not yet.
Well, we get a copy?
We'll take it on notice, yeah.
Can I just say about the hockey centre, it's a nightmare to park when it's busy, so like, my daughter plays netball there, and when there's netball and hockey and whatever else basketball, all the time, it's absolutely nightmare to park there, and, so they need it each time, but I, I think what you mean is empty, it's more than half the time, but when they do need it, it is not.
Yeah, so a pricing system would encourage the people who, again, are park users, so people using the State Network Hockey Centre are technically park users, it's an actor in the park. Um, but they, the pricing is not encouraging the right people to use those spaces, yeah. But a lot of hockey people are coming regionally too, so they can't always catch public transport. It's there, so we've got to manage what they. Yep.
You were talking about lighting before, and obviously that's quite contentious.
Yeah.
Is there an alternative where the people who you believe are using these spaces, students perhaps, you can, you know, engage with them and say, okay, let's talk about use of the park and appropriate behaviours, you know, I mean, there's also a big issue around safety of bicycles and scooters on paths.
Yeah.
There's also a huge issue around litter, you know, and some people just trash in the place, and in a sense, there's probably some, and sense of engagement with the community that would help this problem.
Yes.
And get a more, as you say, more reasonable result.
Yeah, so our park ranger team do a lot of education and engagement programmes in all of our parks, including monitoring of shared paths and the like. The idea of, I guess, going to students would mean we would have to do that on a yearly basis because of the turnover of students. So how we resource that, how we pay for that, is that something we want to consider, I guess it's, all ideas are on the table.
Alicia, with that, Nick Parisis, team sergeant at, this is my chair for his committee there.
Yeah.
And Nick goes engages with all new students during a week, and he goes through them, and I'm sure I'll talk to Nick and make sure that it's added to what he said, just in case he doesn't do it.
Yeah.
Because he can then help educate.
Yeah.
Education plays a big role, it's, you know, that fear, there's a fear of, of not being accepted, which is not necessarily.
It's perception versus bringing in emotion.
And Alicia, there's, there's one thing we haven't touched on, but I hope the master plan will, is that you should be able to combine your entry with public transport use, so.
To the zoo, yeah?
We're trying to get people on the public transport, and the zoo has dragged its heels for too many, too long. You know, when you compare it to Royal Park, any other zoo in Australia, they have combined ticket entry, they try and encourage people to come in by public transport, but I think that needs to be a very significant part of the master plan to get all of the people, the sports people, the visitors, to be using public transport, and that should be built into their tickets. You know, we don't want to see parking on the parkland, which is happening at least twice in recent times with the State Network Hockey Centre, you know, because nobody is staying to them, there's limited parking, or you have to book a parking space, come by public transport, or double up with somebody else, you know, you don't know who comes into those areas, and there's, there's often not.
Non-park users, correct.
Well, and also not many in the car.
But that gives us the chance to do a green travel plan, all these areas, um, I know in a couple of family councils on Royal Parade, they only got the permit to council it yet once they've been there, based on their green travel plans and advising of, don't come by.
Yeah.
That's critical, because the other thing about parking, it's too expensive, one's either they already come and try parking in South Park, or we get it, and that would be a major issue, it's already parked up.
Yeah.
So that's, it's got to be finding balance between all of the departments of council.
Yes, correct, so I have a project control group and a project working group in-house at the City of Melbourne that covers parking, ecology, trees, all of those issues, so we're all around the table making decisions about where we push and pull to get the right gun.
So Samantha, who's in the committee?
Samantha, who, sorry?
Um, what's her name, for, 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 she, she pays up the parking as well?
Uh, yes, so we've got a parking director on the PCG, and we've got parking officers on our working.
Alicia, I have a question, don't, one question's the one you don't want to ask. My question is, is the multi-level car park dead and dusted, or is it still hanging around like a bad old?
Uh.
Okay.
Um, we're not proposing it on land, we control.
From what?
We're not proposing it on land, we control. Um, cool, all right, we'll leave that there for now.
Alicia, for entering all the questions, we've been having a good discussion.
That, we have been having a good discussion.
Yeah, and have you got a quite a lot to go?
I have got two more.
Okay, fine, so with one, one, uh, question, if you could.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yes, I did, just a comment.
Yeah.
I've been, having seen the chaos around the zoo during school holidays, I've actually written to them on occasions, and told them they need to go to booked timed entry by all the major art galleries and other places doing it. And that part of the salt's a tragic problem, but, you know, so, we're thinking about the tragic around the zoo, and the zoo is there, I think it needs to be, the zoo needs to be proactive, particularly managing it during school holidays, which is just.
So they do manually manage the car park at the moment on school holidays, in partnership with council, because all of their car parking is on our managed land. So there is a need in the, which is what the Parking Management Plan talks about, is centralising the management of the parking in partnership with the State Sports Centre and the zoo. So that's talking about things like ticketed prices and other incentives to encourage people to use alternative modes of transportation to the major destinations of the park. Um, so this is really interesting information around how well the park is used. So 55.3% of visitors visit Royal Park South, so what Anne was talking about, south of Macarthur and Elliot Avenue. Um, 48% use the pathways through the park, so that's the second highest user group, which means our park networks need to be well connected, well signposted, easy to use, easy to access, reduce the conflicts between cyclists and pedestrians that you mentioned earlier, um, around how people get through and around the park. Um, 30.3% visit Royal Park North, and 25% of that is residents from the city of Meridack. Um, and they only visit that section because they can't cross the barriers, I guess, of the train line. Um, 24.6% visit Royal Park Central, so that's where the State Hockey Centre and the zoo is, and, and, and Erving Camp. That's probably a little bit low, given, it was probably just people who visit the surrounding area of that space, it didn't count visitors to the zoo or the State Sports Centre. Um, 23.5% visit Royal Park East, so that's that kind of sporting corridor down on the avenue. Uh, 18.3% visit Royal Park West, which is not necessarily a bad thing, as Rowan Lekett has told me many times, that's his favourite part of the park, because it's quiet. Um, but it's an indication that as you head further north, the level of accessibility and visitation drops, and it's generally because of that significant barrier of Macarthur and Elliot Avenue, um, where, and a lot of people find the destinations in, in the south part of the park enough, they don't feel the need to explore any further. Um, but it means that the park doesn't operate as a whole, because we're getting a lot of use in different parts of the park because of what use is there, so we're getting high use in sports area, high use in the southern part of the park, so the bits that are really easily accessible has got that higher number.
See, that blue bit there, that would be most used by all the people, and I naturally throw it up. But the numbers there are huge, especially during COVID.
Yeah, so again, community engagement is just a snapshot in time, it's not an indicator of.
You can, but if I, you can get that in some areas.
Yeah, correct, yeah, um, the other data that we're looking at using is mobility data, so using mobile phone data coverage, which our initial cut of that data is very consistent with this. Which might be because birders don't necessarily go birding with their mobile phone?
They do that.
Or they've got ID, everything, so maybe they do.
Can I move on to something that's, that's, I think, also contentious, apart from lighting?
Yeah.
That's the use of the shared paths.
Yeah.
Because when you look at the transport plan for the City of Melbourne, every asphalt path in Royal Park is coloured blue, if I remember rightly, and it's labelled as a bicycle path, you know? Now, we see a lot of cyclists, A, using shared paths, but the Capital City Trail is just terrible, but we also see bicycles cutting corners all through the park. So what is the master plan going to suggest about, I would like to see that all paths, shared, all the asphalt paths, uh, can only be used by bicycles, they can't go anywhere else, and that they must give way to pedestrians, so that they, it's not a shared path, it's really the cyclists have to give way to pedestrians. Can that be incorporated into the, um, the master plan? Because it's a park.
Oh, sorry?
Because it's a park.
Yes, because it's a park, so, um, Royal Park, unlike some of our more heritage gardens, still allows cyclists to root for. Um, when a lot of those paths were built, there's a couple of standards through the Vic Roads shared cycling guidelines, where they have better line marking, they have better kind of sign boosting of sharing and use your belves and all that kind of stuff, that's quite easy for us to do. Um, the width of the path in some locations probably doesn't match the use, so that path that we were talking about earlier down the train line gets a thousand cycles a day. Capital City Trail gets nearly twice that in summer and spring. So the size of the paths are potentially not suitable enough for the volume of traffic they're getting.
But you know, you were, you were talking, putting a separate path, the Capital City Trail being a classic one of danger, putting another shared path, if you can get, talk to VicTrack.
Yeah.
Whatever, that big of land, I mean, that would be ideal, for that very, very dangerous type of park.
So where, so the guidelines talk about a scale of car infrastructure depending on volume of current and projected traffic. So, um, the paths we have now, all of the paths in the park, it consisted with the 97 Master Plan generally, where it's 2.5 metres. We don't have enough scope to go smaller or larger than that currently in the current master plan. Um, the Vic Roads guidance talks about, um, separation where the volumes are quite high, if we can look at ways to separate, we're probably will, or create like meandering really nice natural pedestrian paths, and then the cyclists can have the asphalt park. Um, so yeah, there's, there's ways and means of getting that balance right around use and activity on shared park, yeah.
I guess if I may just say, that's another point, maybe that relationships with the cyclists might really help, behavioural change of the cyclists is so crucial, and if you get them young, if you get them young and, you know, through the. And if you get them young, if you get them young and, you know, through the university, maybe you don't do it, maybe the university doesn't, because they don't want their students to die or get hurt.
Also twenty-five to thirty percent of those cyclists aren't City of Melbourne residents. They're coming from Marybeck, they're coming from Yarra, they're coming from all over. Because Royal Park is the intersection of two key cycle paths. So the outfield path, which goes all the way along the outfield train line, which is split in sections that they've just done the Moreland to Bell renewals. Uh, oh, sorry, Moreland to Bell renewals. Um, and that's really successful, where people with dogs walk on one side and then cyclists walk on, ride on the separated section. So, um, they're following that current guidance around separation where the volumes are quite high. Um, Royal Park has that intersection of Capital City, which I also said is one of those hotspots, it heads down into a tunnel towards Prince's Park. Um, so we're getting residents converging in Royal Park that we don't necessarily have the reach to educate them necessarily, but it could be things like what Kay was talking about, where it's educating them on the, on the journey around, bring your bell, give way to pedestrians, that kind of thing, which isn't on any of our park infrastructure currently.
It doesn't work. They tried to implement measures onto the Capital City Trail by warning people to slow down and, you know, just go down there anytime during commute and you'll get snarled at, you'll get killed.
Yeah, it's quite aggressive.
The cyclists, the commuter cyclists.
The, the T, the intersection with the Capital City and the, um, the outfield path also probably doesn't make current standards where it should be a T intersection. There's actually two paths that join, so it's actually quite tricky.
Very steep.
And it's very steep, yeah.
Yeah. Do you think he thought about re-grouping these bike paths now, that park could, do you think all the other parks and gardens in the City of Melbourne and that place, now that they have the park, bike track, that can...
Um, that was probably set when the historic gardens were developed, where the cyclists generally go around and not through the historic gardens. Um, Royal Park is again that different beast compared to all of our other parks in the city, where it is the top part of the city, so it converges with a lot of other municipalities. That, yes, we have the honour of managing this space, but it also means we've got to honour the other people using it too.
We're doing quite a lot of building right, a long road. I'm wondering if we could just even think about, you know, diverting some of that traffic to those...
Three, three thousand users a day is not nothing. We enjoy the park as well.
Yes.
So it's our park too. And we do have to be respectful, but also there's some things that can be left. There are instinctual things that both sides can do to support each other in the use of space.
Bike behaviour, bike rider behaviour, it's not a proper issue.
Then just what I can control in one park, yes.
On that side, your initial figures of thirty point one to thirty, if I remember correctly, people who enjoy the park because of nature, that should be increased. Because we've just turned now from the bike community that one of the reasons why bikes come through the park is because of the landscape. So I'd be looking at some of those figures that you've got there, especially in relation to the nature base, because it might be that other people like bike riders, other people who might be enjoying the park may be doing so because of that, not because of the bike, not because of anything else, you know?
Yeah, so people were able, in that question, able to answer two, more than one. So that's an accumulative number.
I think also that, that was a specific question, that what do you come to Royal Park for?
Yeah.
Whereas if you look at the responses to the caring for nature theme, that was, you know, the highest response, that's the highest sort of reaction from people who responded to the survey, responded to that, whether they were specifically coming here to enjoy nature or whether they're running their bikes through.
So what I'm saying is, that's really quite marginalised now, because it doesn't take into account people who are on a bike, might like going on the bike through the park because they're going through nature. So that's the only point that I'm...
But I think you didn't select model options, because that would apply to me. I'd take the park, through the park even though I'm nice as well, because I really like the park.
Yeah, but if the question itself... Yeah, but if the question itself was what's your primary reason for the park, of course you'd say, going to or wanting to use the park, you wouldn't say also because I enjoy nature at the same time.
So I have just taken a snapshot of a nearly hundred page report. So a lot of the nuance you're talking about is in that report around some of that cross-referencing between nature and the reason they're visiting the park. Um, like Fiona said, caring for nature and caring for the park had the highest response. So we will be respectful of the reasons why people are coming to this park, because that was the highest response and it's what the park is valued for. So, but the other thing is too, there's a lot of people that are using the park for different reasons, and a park has multiple uses for multiple people. So it is shared past, it's bike past, it's sport, it's recreation, it's a whole range of activities that we've got to get that balance right.
Okay. What about the landscape? I mean, that's a very important part of the Royal Parks. The fact that it's classified as open grassy woodland, and yet is that going to be, I think we need to come back and very seriously look at that open grassy woodland landscape because I don't, I think it's got away from us. It's now got probably too many shrubs. It's certainly got too much of the same plant, which is regalia. And that regalia is a rare plant. When you look up the floor of Melbourne, it's a rare plant in Melbourne, and yet in Royal Park...
It survives the millennium drought, she was one of the only...
I don't care.
But yes, we do understand, I know Dylan from our urban forest team has also presented to you on the percentage of trees that we have in Royal Park. Um, so thirty-four percent of Royal Park has extensive tree canopy coverage. Um, so the urban forest and ecology team is doing some work around landscape and what our next landscape goals are. So around, is it reflective exactly of urban grassy woodland? Or is it reflective of a grassy woodland given the conditions it's in right now? And we'll be in the future with bike...
Well, is that going to be part of the master plan?
Yes, yeah. So that landscape character theme will have a lot more detail in it when the draft master plan comes out.
And it could see change in that tree because it is not open grassy woodland.
No, not all, not all across the entire park. So the original nineteen eighty-four and the ninety-seven plan talked about open grassy woodlands, but also grassland and wetland habitat. So there's a range of habitats that this park of this size can create and capture.
It's not regalia park.
We've taken that on board, Dylan, Dylan is on the, on the, on the Royal Park on Regalia.
Just a question about commercial use of the park.
Yeah.
Where I've noticed an increasing use, use of the park for balloonie companies. What restrictions or what plans there for commercial use of the park?
So balloonies companies get a, they've got a permit to operate within the park. Um, there's particular landing sites that they're allowed to and not allowed to go to. Um, generally, I believe, which we can follow up, they're consistent with the conditions of that permit. They've been doing that for such a really long time. It's seasonal as well, so it's not all year round. Um, but yes, they have a permit to operate.
So is there, is there going to be a limit on commercial use of the park? I mean, what, why are balloonies allowed to use, but is there not, um, are the commercial enterprises that might like to use the park?
Well, they use them, right? They go around the... Especially scary night.
Yeah, so commercial uses, yeah, commercial uses are subject to a permit. And we have an event policy for events and activities in the park that are scaled between low, medium and high. So we assess their potential impact based on use and activity. The other activity we're getting a lot more of is orienteering, which we think is a perfectly great activity in the park.
Soulcraft.
Soulcraft, exactly. Um, they're treated like a sports club now, they're maybe two hundred members. Yep.
Um, I've just had a, the last few months, a few times with the event management thing, and it is to do with orienteering. There's an event happening here tomorrow that should never have been allowed. And I only found out about it two, two years ago, reading the information that's out about this event, and what, there's this in the event management plan that says they must be inclusive. In other words, if you have an event in Royal Park, then it should be free to anyone who wants to participate in it. The event tomorrow is restricted to people who are members of the local orienteering authority. Um, another experienced orienteer myself, they're arguing endlessly that this event should never happen. It's the scale of it, the way it operates is totally inappropriate for this bit of the park where it's going to operate. Um, I've actually got some stuff with me. Anyone that can be out in the park tomorrow and give me feedback, or Kay feedback on what happens tomorrow, it would be much appreciated. But my question is, if you ever in any of the discussion about the master plan, think seriously about who is managing events within the park and think about any possible restrictions that should be placed on that, that certain people should be involved? It's very hard to deal with it. I was just lucky that I eventually found the name of somebody in this committee higher. But that's, most of it is just the council's number, so you can't find anyone to really talk to. Um, and it just got around them.
Yeah, so events in the park are subject to permits, and we are advised of those events. So I'm advised of activities that are happening in Royal Park. Um, and we put conditions on their permit. The Rangers will also be in the park tomorrow to monitor the conditions and make sure they're consistent with those conditions. So it's the first time that we've given a permit to this group. Um, we know we've done orienteering with other groups. So we have to give them the benefit of doubt that they'll be generally consistent with the conditions in that permit.
This is not the first time you've had this one in a park. And they have run through areas, and she knows, and various other things. They're known as the cowboys of orienteering, right? And they're not all that popular with the other party. Yes, but the key thing for me is that the first thing that the event planning people should be asking, who is going to be committed to participate in this event? And it comes down to, will it talk for men, or it talk for women, or it talk for orienteering authority members? It just shouldn't go ahead because it's not inclusive. It was the event management plan says it should be.
Then quickly, you can't just rock up and join in the local team. I mean, you could be a member, you could be a...
So, um, I would have to look at the exact conditions on that permit, but we are monitoring it. So there's conditions there, we monitor it, we give it the benefit of the doubt. If they do the wrong thing, they don't get another permit, that's the way this needs to work. Yep.
On your previous slide, you mentioned renaming this process with the Aboriginal name.
Yes, so...
Is there any thought of renaming the park?
Uh, there is thought of renaming the park, but the first step in working with Rurundjeri is naming the plan itself. So we want to encourage more use of our own language within the City of Melbourne. Um, and we've put a naming request just for the plan, not the park.
I think that might be the last question, and you've got a couple more slides.
Yeah, sure.
Alicia, do you anticipate any more major construction incursions in the park? I was rather surprised to see all that in the last few years, all that new building.
The Parkfield and Manatee Block?
Department of Justice, I assume. And I assume you have no control.
Yeah, so we only have, we have committee of management from the state over the parcel of land that is parkland. Um, the rail corridors, the tram corridors are outside of our jurisdiction. So, um, for example, the level crossing removal, which has been a little bit in the news and it might be on hold, um, um, we get invited to the table to participate in those projects. So yes, they're on their own title, but they engage with the municipality on those particular projects. So we are generally aware of most. But a master plan can set intention around, so for example, learning the lessons from East West Link, that we don't want that to occur again. Um, we can put that very strongly in the master plan, that if something was to occur outside of what we think might happen now, that might come out of the blue in ten, twenty years' time, we've got enough in the principles to guide that decision-making for people that will be in the council in the future.
That's a part of that big high rise of park, oh, sorry, Primrose, in the avenue. But now the state government wipes out planning laws, and CSL decided to be sold to this, part of it's been sold to this animal products manufacturing called Goedis. But they are intending that they increase the footprint five times on what they've bought. Now, I can see there'll be no control that the council can put in through its master plan on what is developed there. We've already seen Origin take away that small access that was found beside the, that Royal Park Creek. So I'm just, you know, I'm petrified that we're going to have twenty, thirty story, you know, buildings on a CSL site because we will have no control, planning control. What can the master plan do to put in a recommendation for that?
It can talk about protecting view lines, it can talk about their back distances. But you're right, because it is owned by the state, equally as much this site is owned by the state, it's in Melbourne manager of the Orange Crown Complex. Um, that we can advocate very strongly to be consistent with that. So we actually have to get a new master plan in place that has enough of that strength to push back against any of that development.
How does that...
I don't mind any, sorry, this too.
One thing that's not, not to be mentioned at all between state cover is the fauna in Royal Park. So I think according to the fauna here, the nocturnal animals, the orienteering going through the Stephen, whether they're hand caught too, etc., etc. Like, I think that's been pretty important, state cover, it's more of a nature place that incorporate in the... It's not being discussed, but I think always everybody will learn.
Yeah.
It's not being mentioned.
Um, not being mentioned in this presentation, but was mentioned in the discussion paper. Um, ecology, we have an entire team at the City of Melbourne that manages ecology in the park. We have a very strong partnership with the University of Melbourne on ecology in Royal Park. Um, the previous master plan didn't even use the word ecology in the park because of its time and era, I guess, in nineteen ninety-seven. So this plan is going to talk about ecology goals, so around what animals we want to, areas we want to protect to enhance the habitat. So a lot of the habitat is of low or medium quality at the moment, so we need to look at ways to enhance that over time. Um, and also look at what animals we can ambitiously, but realistically reintroduce into the park. So you would have heard recently around things like the earless lizard that was discovered in grasslands west of Melbourne that was thought to be extinct. The Melbourne Zoo is currently doing local extinction breeding programmes around both lizards and frogs and other things, and they see Royal Park as an opportunity to reintroduce some of those. So, um, we're working with all of those partners around ecology and having a very strong presence of ecology in the new muscle.
The ecology people can't issue the purpose, but do you...
They're in the team, they're on, yeah. So the way Parks and City Greening is set up is we have a park services team, a park assets team, our open space planning and green infrastructure team, and urban forest and ecology. So it's the first time all of those have kind of sat in the one branch. We talk to each other all the time about projects that impact their different strategic directions. And I have an ecologist on my working group as well.
I think there's just one last comment or question.
Yeah.
What period of time does the master plan cover?
Usually it's for twenty years.
Twenty years?
But then a review at ten.
If it covers twenty years, then the statistics that you, that we've got there is just for today.
Correct, yeah.
We also need to know the growth rate of those. Is that being considered?
Yeah, it is being considered. So the City of Melbourne is anticipating a huge population spike, um, not to South, but also Marybeck on our doorstep. Um, Royal Park is the park that serves both those municipalities and their primary open spaces. So this park has to do a lot of heavy lifting for a lot more people into the future, and a lot more animals in the future.
It's a terribly big job to, to predict like car parking and traffic flow and so on over twenty years.
Yeah, it is.
So that's, I think, where the, which we haven't really spoken about, but the, the core of this plan, that will set it up for management in the future. It's not necessarily saying there's going to be a X, Y, Z there and a lot there. Um, it's, it's the, those really fundamental statements that help us in the future when something comes at us to respond clearly. We know what the intention is for the twenty years rather than the specific actions.
Is it still going to be incorporated in documents?
No, I don't think so. I think that wasn't the intention, I don't think, into the planning scheme.
Yeah, that's incredible.
There may be reference, it won't be incorporated, not, not planning controls associated with it. I think it's a reference document.
It's a reference?
Yeah, so it's in the planning scheme as, as something we prefer to, but it's...
And some incorporated documents would no longer be able to be reference documents under the new territorial guidance issued about four part year of gardening. So it'd be exceptionally difficult to make it as an incorporated document, I think.
I mean, the main thing that guides planning controls for the park is that it is in the park and recreation zoning in the planning system. So the whole park is protected under that zoning. So that gives us really strong guidance as well as to what the park is to be used for in the future.
And just statements, again, for the state heritage registration.
Yeah.
Even use since ninety-seven and it's, you know, it's linked very closely to that. Um, there's a lot of planning, like, rid of that competing there.
This is definitely, you get it on the heritage register. With your reference there.
Um, so the other thing I wanted to mention too is everyone's kind of talked about their story and their connections with Royal Park. Um, and engagement told us lots of unique stories about important connections to Royal Park. So by capturing some of those stories and capturing some of those intents in the plan, they're sometimes stronger than principles alone, that people can tell us the reasons why they visit, the reasons why it's important, and that can give a really strong emotive connection to the master plan. Um, so it's allowing then different people to consider the park from many different perspectives, which is generally what my job is, but the plan needs to do that too. Um, so in terms of next step, um, the consultation summary will be uploaded to Participate Melbourne next week. Final timelines are now being confirmed with council. The naming request for the plan has gone through Rurundrie Wurundro, so we'll have an intention of that name around April. Um, and then the draft master plan is now in development and it forms via community engagement findings as well as all of the different discussions I had on the plan on a daily basis. So thanks for bearing with us, thank you for the very robust conversation, um, that gives us the key directions to help us balance those kind of concerns that are coming from these four groups. Um, thanks for having me today, I hope you got the answers that you needed. Um, and I'm available through Kay if you've got any other questions or...
Through any of us.
What's that?
And through any of you.
Through any of you, yes. Um, so yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, it's been a big job, it's a work and that you can hear that we're a passionate group about the natural environment. And just in the time that I've been around the park, there's been such a loss, hasn't there, there seems to me, there's been lots of the, loss of the natural park, land area.
Uh, it's not the area, yes, but the quality of the landscape has improved.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
So the tree planting percentage, the quality of our story has substantially improved, especially in the last ten years, yeah.
But I think the group has real concerns having that in the future of...
As do we. Um, we also want to look at ways to grow the park into the future. So there was a couple of really good actions, similar to what Kay was talking about with the CSL site, but also sites we control. So, um, the avenue, for example, was talked about closing three sections of that to add additional green space to Royal Park. Um, we're investigating that and options for that will probably come out by the draft. Thanks very much.
Yes, I'm excited. Before you get up, we've got refreshments, you're very welcome. We have ordinary food, we have gluten free, we have vegan, we have vegetarian, we have whatever. Do join us and the Royal, the next Royal Park meeting will be in June and that's going to be all about designing boxes. So if you're interested in the plan, try over it, I do come along this June, the legend will be...
Please sign a form if you haven't signed in.
And anyone, anyone...
Top ground.